Minimum standards of the vacant properties. The minimum standards are found on page two of your ordinance that you have, under point five. And there are 11 standards that these owners must comply with. The ordinance also allows for the correction of these violations if the owners fail to maintain the properties. Our revolving fund has been recommended to be part of the amended ordinance, which is funded by the registration fees paid by the owner. There are some technical amendments needed to conform the ordinance to the existing ordinance and statutes.
So essentially Barbara, we're talking about, and I think all of the councils, particularly the ward councils, have been faced with the issues of property that's been abandoned, it's between, it's been foreclosed upon, and during that period of limbo, property has been allowed to deteriorate and be an eyesore in the neighborhoods. And this is a way for us to go about being able to take control of this property, do the necessary maintenance, if we will, the cutting of the growth, and being able to go after the rightful owners to assure that there's a pool of money there that can handle that.
That's correct.
Is that accurate?
Yes.
I think all of us councilors are aware of that's what the situation is. There have been a few amended changes to that. Could you speak to these?
Yes. For the first amendment, we're asking that the words "to the extent approved annually" be added to the, is on the second page, point three of registration fees. This is just to conform with the ordinance itself.
So we're changing words. The enforcement through the Director of Inspection Services, we're able to go after these, if it's the owners of the property. Isn't he cute running around there, huh?
Yeah, he is.
Thank you, Councilor Spatafor, for bringing your son here that helps to liven up the place, and what a nice young man he is.
So the first amendment goes to this revolving fund that needs to be established, which is approved annually by the council. And that, those words just go after, "Registration fees collected pursuant to this section shall be deposited to the extent approved annually." Simple words, no problem there.
So I just, if there's no questions, I would open it up to...
Do you have, I believe, Councilor Spatafor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Barbara. First off, I wanted, you know, first to see that it's nice to see that this ordinance is finally being enforced. I actually was the one who put this through for the City of Malden, and I'm taking, it wasn't my credit, it was something that was happening in other communities around us when the beginning of the housing market started to collapse. But I just, you know, I wanted to give two briefings on this update on this ordinance. One is, the initial reason for this ordinance was put into a lot of communities wasn't just to put the money in the bank and use it for, you know, regular city services. It was literally to pay for the cost, not only as a cleanup, but more importantly, in the beginning, and it's gotten a little bit better now, the cities didn't know who owned the particular properties, and in some cases, the banks didn't know who owned it. So the legwork that was entailed by cities and towns to find these particular owners became expensive. And Chris Webb came to the City Council probably three years ago and said, you know, that would spend three or four hours, sometimes days, looking to find out who owned this particular piece of property. The second part of that fee too was if there was an event on a piece of property, meaning the doors were broken, the windows had been boarded up, there was rubbish in the backyard. And I know every ward council heard this story now, unfortunately, many times. That money was to be used for that reason. And now I think the mayor and the new evolution of the public properties unit is really starting to do yeoman's work in the neighborhoods, and not only are they doing it, but they're doing it faster. There's a couple pieces of property where I live that's been on this particular list. And because of, I think, some accounting issues, and, you know, it was a joint task force with the Housing Authority, and, you know, no pun towards them, but it was just, it was, you didn't know what the right hand was doing, and from a council's perspective, we had no say in that situation. It was basically went up there, and if they wanted to do it, they did it. Now that it's controlled by the city side 100 percent, we can control not only how fast we report to these, but how we use the monies that not only do we collect, but how fast we can use that money to clean up that piece of property. And I know the mayor's been kind of putting the cart before the hospital, he's gonna, just going after that, picking up the debris and the rubbish, and then we'll get the money after by issuing some tickets. So it's good to see, A, that the ordinance is being used. I wish we didn't have to use it at all, but unfortunately we have to. But B, I think it's important, you know, the residents know that it's gonna be swifter action, and you don't have to sit outside and look at the high grass, you know, in the summertime, or the trash piling up, because now we have the ability and some funding mechanism to go after them pretty quickly.
That's correct.
So I applaud, you know, the committee, and thanks to ordinance to get it out quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Spatafor. Any other lights? I see none. And just from my seat, like Councilor Spatafor, worked on some, have worked on this ordinance at great depth, and so I'm certainly pleased to see it before the full council tonight for a direction in terms of having a defined set of standards that we deem are important to maintain the quality of life in our neighborhoods. So I hope there is full support of this as well. And I think that we'll certainly, only, this is addressing the vacant, foreclosed properties, but the Problem Properties Unit is doing fabulous work. A couple of us sit on that and are very engaged as stakeholders, and they are actually performing a great deal of work. And I think the residents across the city that are hearing about the work of the PPU or have had to even deal with the PPU have had, it's been a good working relationship to get it accomplished to the level that we want. So, that being said, on Councilor Anderson's motion to amend, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? On Councilor Anderson's motion to enroll, roll call.
Counselor Anderson?
Yes.
Yes. Crowe?
Yes.
Dark Angelo?
Yes.
Kinnon?
Yes.
Lucy?
Yes.
Matheson?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Nestor?
Yes.
Spatafora?
Yes.
Altrino?
Yes.
Boochi?
Yes.
On Councilor Anderson's motion to suspend rules, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? On Councilor Anderson's motion to ordain, roll call.
Counselor Anderson?
Yes.
Yes. Crowe?
Yes.
Dark Angelo?
Yes.
Kinnon?
Yes.
Lucy?
Yes.
Matheson?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Nestor?
Yes.
Spatafora?
Yes.
Altrino?
Yes.
Boochi?
Yes.
11 to zero passes. Next order of business.
The Standing Committee on Ordinance, to whom is referred pick number 179, series of 2012, having considered the same, make the following report. Be hereby ordained that section 3.5A of the revised ordinances of 1991 be amended relative to the resident employment construction ordinance. Committee recommends that this paper be reported out favorably. Counselor Anderson for the committee.
Will you receive the committee report?
On Councilor Anderson's motion to receive the committee report, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor Anderson.
Again, in the absence, this is an issue that we've been wrestling with for some time now. Last year, we all, I think, were very pleased with our ability to force a general contractor to comply with our Malden residents ordinance. We saw that there were many of our Malden residents, well-qualified, well-trained, Malden craftsmen who, who were, given the bad economy, were out of work. At the same time, we saw a lot of workers in this big, multi-million dollar renovation project that we had going on at the high school, many of those, and too many of those persons were coming from outside of the City of Malden. When we would ask the contractor to give us some explanation as to why they weren't living up to the, to the goals that were set for the number of Malden residents that were to come on the job, the number of minorities, and women, and apprentice, they danced around a lot and shuffled numbers, and it was clear that this council was not pleased with their We threatened those, that contractor, threatened to withhold money. We insisted that they come before us, and we had them here on the carpet, and as a result of all of that activity, the contractor began to comply and began to make great strides in, in bringing those goals to where they were. Since that time, we've been informed by our city solicitor that there have been other communities that have experienced a situation where the contractor has challenged those very laws, or that very, that very ordinance, that there are, that they have lost in court when the contractor has challenged the city's insistence that they maintain these goals. I think it's the City of Quincy, and the other city, was it Fall River? That, they've lost in court, and that we've been, we've been informed that if we were to try to continue with our current ordinance as it stands, that we will also be challenged. That's what our law department is telling us, and that's, they're telling us that as a result of recent case history. I think there is not a single counselor here that wants to give up the ability to force these contractors to comply with these goals. I think that when we had that enforcement mechanism, we were able to get those contractors to comply, and I think we'd all like to see that again. Our law department is telling us that we can't, we can't continue with the ordinance as it was. So they have come up with a plan that calls for more voluntary compliance that will withstand a court challenge, and I'm gonna ask Assistant City Solicitor, she'll come before us and give us more detail. I wanna say before I ask Barbara to speak is that, that we've gone around in circles in this, in the committee. You know, I think some of the committee members have, have felt very strongly that if we give up this enforcement authority, that these contractors are not gonna comply. There have been others of us who have said, well, there are other cities that look for this voluntary compliance, and if it's established right and implemented right, that we will move toward, toward the goal attainment. So there is clearly a difference of opinion on the part of the, of the ordinance committee. So it's here before us, with 11 of us now, to take a look at this. And we'll ask Assistant City Solicitor, Ms. Durgan, if she will give us a wrap-up there.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson. It's the Resident Construction Employment Monitoring Committee that's recommending our resident ordinance to be amended because of, as Counselor stated, two recent cases have come down, decided by the federal court. And both of these cases state that by imposing a residency requirement on public construction contracts is in violation of the Privilege and Immunities Clause of the United States Constitution. The Privilege and Immunities Clause protects against economic discrimination. It was in the Quincy case, decided in April 2012, the court stated that the Privilege and Immunities Clause was to ensure that citizens from State A who go to work in State B have the same opportunities as a citizen of State B enjoy. In the Fall River case, decided in October 2011, the court held that the Fall River residency provisions places the plaintiff's workers at a disadvantage due to the violation of the fundamental right to employment, where the employee is hired by a private contractor who receives a government contract to work on a public project. This case is very significant because Fall River had repealed its residency ordnancy, thus claiming that the plaintiff's case, it was UKAN, was moot. However, that argument was dismissed by the federal court because the court stated that even a voluntary cessation of a challenged practice would not deprive the court of its power to determine the legality of the practice. Currently, the Malden residency ordinances require 35 percent Malden residents. The monitoring committee recommends amending the ordinance to encourage voluntary compliance.
So Barbara, tell us the plan for voluntary compliance. I think the councilors need to, some of us have been sitting in on this, but what is the plan? And why do you, and you obviously recommend it, and I support it. Would you tell us why, what it is that would, how, tell us how it would work?
So now the residency requirement is being requested for that the contractor voluntarily comply with this ordinance. The ordinance will be handed out by each bidding authority at the time of the contract. Each of the, of the minimum requirements are all voluntary, whether that be the residency or the minorities, women or apprentices. They're all now voluntarily requested. Once the contractor does accept that to voluntary comply, then they must provide documentation to show and document how many minorities, how many Malden residents are on each project. The one thing still remaining in place is the publication in accordance with Chapter 149 of these jobs. In addition, the mayor's office will put this information online so people who are interested in working on a construction project can also register online. And it will be up to the, a monitoring committee will still have review and be responsible for carrying out the review provisions of this ordinance.
So in some of the bigger cities like Boston as an example, they, they have a lot of private contractors going on as well as public contract, and the contractors have gotten the word that they're looking for, for goal attainment in these areas, and that it works. So the question, so both the monitoring committee and the city solicitor's offices recommending that, that we change our ordinance to reflect that, and we certainly lose the teeth of have, of being able to force them to comply, but both the city solicitor's office as well as the monitoring committee are telling us that they think this will work.
We believe that by handing out this ordinance at the time, with the bidding authority, that there are contractors, we are told, who will voluntary comply.
Then I'll open it up to everybody.
I did look to my left, and Counselor Kinnon's light is on. Okay. To my right? Counselor Nestor.
Thank you. As the head of ordinance, I'm not sure how this paper floated in, but this absolutely strips all of our power to help Malden residents. Simple as that. To find jobs, absolutely strips them right, all the powers we have. They're not gonna comply. Anybody that thinks they're gonna comply, go to M A TV, watch the tapes of what we had to go through to get Gil Bane to even give us correct information. They stood up at that podium, they lied to us week after week after week after week, until we got John Furlong, until they hired John Furlong. And the only reason they hired John Furlong? Because we said we're gonna stop payments. Or we, there was a threat, we were gonna stop payments. I think we put that through twice, it didn't, it didn't work, but the motion was out there that we were gonna stop payments. Comparing this to Boston, this doesn't work. We're not anywhere near the scale of Boston is. We continually, the ordinance committee continually asked the city solicitor's office to come back with some way to get this done. They have not done that. My colleague to the, to my left, John Matheson, came up with an innovative way to, to meet this, so that we can protect Malden residents and Malden residents' jobs. I would make a motion that we table that, so that the full council can review John Matheson's work that he's done before we make a decision on that. There's absolutely no way, and we've seen it over and over again, that these, these companies are gonna voluntarily, you know, work for this, and put Malden people to work. So a vote for this, in my mind, is stripping Malden residents of jobs. Plain and simple as that. We have something on here that has not been challenged, on our books. We have an ordinance on our books that has not been challenged. There's no reason to go forward, I don't think, there's no reason to go forward to change it at all until such time that we are challenged, and then we can review it. But it takes, strips all the teeth and all the power away from us. You know, every year, the last five, six years, I go to the frozen fours at the college hockey championships. Kind of one of the fun things they do is they put up these ridiculous laws that have been on the books for years, and ordinances that have been on the books in these particular states for years, and they're absolutely ridiculous. They're still sitting on the books. No one's changed them. There's no reason to do that. This ordinance, this law affects Malden residents. We put over 100 people to work, maybe 150 people to work, on a job that they had absolutely no intention of putting one additional Malden resident on. This absolutely strips it. I would hope this committee would not vote for this paper that's in front of you. I hope that you would table it and, and review the hard work that Council Matheson has done over the last few weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Nestor. Counselor Matheson.
Well, I wanna thank the counselor for his complimentary words. I'm not gonna speak about what I drafted. I was just trying to be creative, because we find ourselves at a crossroads with respect to our ordinance. But just to hit on some simple points, Counselor Anderson said, you know, here's an opportunity for 11 people to take a look. I would like 11 people to take a look. So I'm gonna move that we table this, so that we really can digest this. Moving hasty now with respect to a law that governs our city is not a smart thing to do. I just caution us to take our time and think about this. We're going from an ordinance that obviously did serve to put people back to work, and, you know, in the business world, you do have to hold their feet to the fire. Businesses don't have consciences, they, they make decisions on dollars and cents, cost-benefit analysis. You know, if you give a business an opportunity to voluntarily comply, they'll voluntarily not comply. We know that with the rise of the double polls very recently. We know it from countless other examples. So my feeling is that we'd be moving ourselves to an ordinance that really wouldn't accomplish a purpose at all. It would be almost like not having an ordinance on the books. That being said, no disrespect to anyone else's work, or, or any other opinions that might come our way, I just really want us to think about this issue and come up with a way that we can help promote employment in Malden. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Matheson.
I know that there's a motion, and we don't speak on the motion, but if I may, it was my intention, first, let me respond to what Counselor Nestor said. The reason that it's here before us is because we had an ordinance committee meeting this evening that was scheduled, and those that were there reviewed the item that was on the docket and moved it, it was an attempt that was made the last time to do that, but it kinda ended in a stalemate, to get it before 11 of us now to, to consider this very important thing. And that's why, that's why it's here, and that's how it got here. My intention was to, to have it here before 11 of us, to be able to look at that, and for each of us to, to raise, you know, in our own minds, to figure out whether we wanna support it or, or let it stand as it is. And so I certainly welcome the tabling motion, that let it stand. We've got one more week before, one more meeting before we recess for the summer. There are contracts that are, that are kinda being held, I understand, pending, whether we move with this new voluntary movement or stay with what we have. So I think holding it over for a week, we can decide, and if it, in the final analysis, it's either gonna be voted up or down. And so I would welcome the tabling motion, that it's staying for a week. Thank you.
Counselor Kinnon.
Yes, I am actually quite surprised that this came out of committee this way, and I guess it came out tonight. I would, I would just say that altogether, all too many things this year seem to be getting voted in committee and coming out that night. That needs to stop, so that can people can stop and think about what they're voting on, not just this shotgun approach that's going on, on an all-too-frequent basis. But Counselor Matheson came up with a very creative idea that absolutely bears some looking at, number one. Number two, after repeated, repeated attempts with the legal department to go back, you know, they lack creativity. That's all I would say. Come back? This is a five-year, a five-year situation for me, as far as I'm concerned. You ask them to go out, come back. Look, if we can't do it this way, come back another way that we can do it. Don't come back until you do. I told John, when he put this forward, look, it looks good, I'm certainly no lawyer, they're gonna come back next week and tell you, you can't do it this way. That's exactly what happened. Did they come back with another solution? No. They need to start thinking outside of the box. Our people's jobs depend on it. These are good-paying jobs, not, you know, ballpark-paying, $10 an hour jobs that may come our way, which will be good for kids, but these are the type of jobs that people can raise a family on, and our people, without this ordinance that we had, we would've been sitting way down, 10 percent, maybe less than that in some cases. And it's a travesty. It's a travesty when we look at our own budget, and we see the school department has 34 people making over $100,000 in it, and three of them live in the City of Malden. It's a travesty when the fire department chief lives in Raleigh. It's a travesty when other department heads live. We gotta get it together and put our own people to work in good-paying jobs. So my own take on this is they need to go back, they need to look at it, and I would encourage everybody here to come up with it, whatever creative ideas you have. But this voluntary stuff, it ain't gonna work. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kinnon. I see no other lights, so...
If I may just address Counselor Kinnon's remarks, please, Madam President.
Oh, absolutely, Barbara, yep.
Thank you. For the city to withstand a challenge to this ordinance, there must be substantial data or empirical data to document and justify our position. The legal department has looked at numerous sources of statistical data, unemployment figures, minority figures. There is no data available that we can find at this time to demonstrate the substantial basis that we need to withstand a challenge to the current ordinance. Quincy tried to justify, using some substantial data to justify their multimillion-dollar project they were putting up in downtown Quincy. The court rejected their argument because they had no empirical data. You cannot withstand a challenge unless you have empirical data, statistics to justify. We don't have that right now. And that's the reason that this ordinance is before you. If this ordinance is, goes out on a contract, on the current contracts that are pending, there could easily be a challenge to that ordinance. If there is a challenge and we're not successful, the city must pay the legal fees and costs associated with the plaintiffs prevailing on that case. So this is, it's not something that the legal department has taken lightly. We've spent many hours reviewing the data that we do have to determine if there is a way we could justify a substantial basis for a challenge. We cannot. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay. Counselor Nestor.
Thank you. Just if I could, on empirical data, I think we've talked about this at length in the committee. All we have to go back to is what happened at Malden High previous to this council taking any action. We feel there's plenty of data there, but I would like to move my motion here to table.
And I, by right, have the opportunity to speak before we make activity on your motion. I was one of the members tonight in committee. This has been a topic that has been discussed for some time. I think that my opinion, my weighing in on this topic tonight was relative to having sat in sporadically at different committee meetings on this discussion and hearing very clearly that it was presented as illegal to write it the way that we're trying to write it, based on the information that was being brought to the discussion related to this topic. I certainly don't want to be part of the decision to do something with a deliberateness that would set the city up for any type of cost or expense related to fees and other expenses that may in fact occur or incur if we were to be challenged. I do remember the discussion that we had with Gilbane and others, and certainly recognize that the good work of a few councils on this council to be tenacious and diligent, as well as the hiring of a liaison, which is embedded in this ordinance, that any developer would have to do the same, to maintain a vigilance in terms of what we would want to see as far as resident engagement on, as it relates to employment. As much as it is a challenge to try to get creative, I think that Counselor Matheson's idea has been in council committee for two or three weeks now, and I hadn't heard anything back from it. But what's more important for me tonight to have asked or weighed in on moving this out of committee was to have a discussion with the entire body. Because it is a very busy time, and yes, there are things going on in committee and things that, you know, move pretty fast from the table of discussion to a vote. We do that every time we suspend rules, when there are things coming out of committee that evening. But I think this is a critically important one to, that we struggle with. But legally, in my mind, it's pretty black and white. So I do appreciate the time that's being spent. You know, there is a tabling motion. It's been seconded, I believe, Counselor Matheson. So let's take that tabling motion. There's a light on. I'm very sorry. Is someone wanting to speak on this?
Are we tabling to, and I know obviously when you're tabling, are we asking for another week so that we can see Counselor Matheson's paper? I mean, is that, I say, the tabling?
The motion was to table one week.
Okay.
So that's clear.
Okay.
But we couldn't get it out of committee, which is why.
No, I understand. I just want to know, I mean, I, you know, I haven't seen the paper that Counselor Matheson put forth, and I think it's all, you know, if we want to clean up the docket by the end of the year, I understand that. But I think if the council's done some work, it's probably worth us just taking a week, getting the paper to us as, you know, early as possible, and then we can digest it and take a vote next week. But I think, you know, if the exercise was to get it before the full committee, it's been done. You know, we have to have a resolve to this at one point, and I'm willing to, you know. Oh, okay. But I'm willing to support the table motion for a week to read.
All right, so we're on a motion to table.
Yeah, I just don't know if part of the table motion was a week so we could have Counselor Matheson's paper before us. That's why I want to ask the duration of the table, and that's what the question was.
It was to be tabled for a week.
Okay.
But did I hear you say it could just? Just.
Table indefinitely.
Well, but then you're talking about tabling indefinitely.
So people can digest it.
That would be indefinite.
That would be indefinite, right. Okay, so the motion on the, for the vote is to table it.
Okay.
Let's roll call it.
Counselor Anderson. Yes. Crow. Yes. Dark Angelo.
Yes.
Yes. Cannon.
Yes.
Lucy.
No.
Matheson.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Nestor.
Yes.
Spetafora.
Yes.
Altrino.
No.
Bucci.
No.
No. So it's table eight to three.
Table eight to three.
On Counselor Lucy's motion to discharge Papers 236 to 239 from Appointments Committee, Mayor's reappointment of Patricia Lawhorn, Simon Muzawik, Michael Cipriano, and Diane Chuha as members of the planning board.
On Counselor Lucy's motion to discharge paper from Appointments Committee, all in favor? Opposed? On Counselor Lucy's motion to place on file, all in favor?
No, this one is confirmed. The next one is placed.
I'm sorry, yeah. On Counselor Lucy's motion to confirm, roll call.
Counselor Anderson. Yes. Crow. Yes. Dark Angelo. Yes. Cannon. Yes. Lucy. Yes. Matheson. Yes. Murphy. Yes. Nestor. Yes. Spetafora. Yes. Altrino. Yes. Bucci.
Yes.
Yes.
They are confirmed.
On Counselor Lucy's motion to discharge Paper Number 213 from Appointments Committee, Mayor's appointment of Christian Pell as a member of the planning board.
On Counselor Lucy's motion to discharge Paper 213 from Appointments Committee, all in favor? Opposed? Counselor Lucy.
Thank you, Madam President. This particular candidate has decided that he could not go forward with his appointment, so he withdrew his name. So I would ask that we accept that withdrawal.
Withdraw. And place it. All right. On Counselor Lucy's motion to place on file, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Under suspension of docket rules, ordered that a revolving fund be established pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a half, to be limited to the sum of $15,000 in accordance with the provisions of Section 3.36.3 of the revised ordinance of 1991. Counselor Lucy.
On Counselor Lucy's motion to suspend docket rules, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor Lucy.
I'd just like to refer that to finance.
Counselor Lucy's motion to refer to finance, all in favor? Opposed? Finance.
And the docket is clear.
Personal privilege. To my left, Counselor Cannon.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to, if there's anybody still out there watching at 10 o'clock tonight, are the reruns. Ward Six's Independence Day celebration will be on Wednesday, the 4th of July. I just want to get that word out there, so thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Counselor Cannon. Counselor Murphy.
And just following up on that, Ward Five's Independence Day celebration will be on Wednesday, July 4th, starting at 9:00 a.m. at Forestale School Park. Looking forward to seeing everyone there.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Counselor Anderson.
Ditto, ditto. Ward Seven, Lincoln Common, Wednesday, July 4th, beginning at 9:30. See you there.
Counselor Dark Angelo.
Thank you. A couple of things. Everybody has gotten their bag, all right? And I'm very pleased to be a Malden Chamber of Commerce member and have the chamber and the ward counselor and several of the other people in city government taking part in the farmer's market. Today was the, one of the first ones, and it was very successful. They had, they had a band out there performing, and it was a really good atmosphere out there. So want to encourage everybody to come down to those. We're going to be having them throughout the summer. That's a really good thing. I also want to thank several people throughout city government and really the greater Malden community. Yesterday, I was fortunate to be at the Salem Towers rededication. Counselor Murphy was there. She did a great job, and it really shows how Malden has led the way. This was the first one, when it was done originally 40 years ago, to be a faith-based organization that got these federal funds. And, you know, now it's one of the first ones to be able to do a low-income housing tax credit deal, and these units will eventually transfer over in 15 years to the Malden Housing Authority. So they've done an excellent renovation there, so a lot of, a lot of kudos go around. And it's really providing some quality housing for the people in Malden. It's just a great thing. And finally, tomorrow morning, I'm going to be at the celebration for 25 years in service of business here in Malden. So it's great to, Paul Murphy Insurance, so it's great to see businesses wanting to stay in Malden, and let's hope we can keep that trend going. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dark Angelo. Counselor Altrino.
Thank you, Madam President. Ward Two, 4th of July is at Dever Park, also to the residents of 89 Pearl Street and Monsignor Nagel on the same day of the 4th. We'll continue the tradition with a private catered barbecue. Also, for those residents in Ward Two where your streets are being dug up for water pipes, a letter will be sent from myself shortly with some updates and contact information. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Altrino. Counselor Lucy.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to again congratulate all the schools on their march towards trying to win championships this past, this past season. But especially, I want to recognize the girls' softball team. It's not often, you know, over time, you don't remember the team that come in second, but that team just had an awesome season. And to get to the finals and play that team they did in Milford that was 25-0, and, you know, if I hear some of the stats, that the pitcher had two runs that she gave up all year long. I mean, it was quite a battle, and to lose it 1-0 in the next innings, you know, that's something we can't forget, although even though they came in second, it was just a heck of a season, and they made Malden proud. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lucy. Counselor Matheson.
Just want to follow suit and let the residents of Ward Three know that the 4th of July celebration will be held at Ambridge Park on July 4th itself. And we're incorporating Felsmere Pond to some degree this year. We're going to do a race around the pond in preparation for having some more events there later in the year. That's all I have to say. And I do believe there is a full council meeting next week, which will be televised, and hopefully we'll get the word out some more about the celebrations around the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Matheson. Counselor Nestor.
Thank you. The Ward Four, 4th of July celebration will be on Saturday, June 30th, the Saturday before, from 9:00 to 1:00 at Quatermole Park. Everybody in the city is welcome to come down and join in the festivities. Thank you.
Counselor Crow.
Thank you, Madam President. Sorry, I lost my voice. And just to round out the Ward events, the Ward One Independence Day celebration will be held on the 4th of July, Wednesday, at Green Street Park, 9:00 to 1:00.
Thank you, Counselor Crow. Counselor Spetafora.
Thank you, Madam President. As one of the councilage, we get to enjoy all the Ward festivities, so thank you. Thank you, Ward and all. I know it's a lot of hard work. But also, I wanted to, you know, just recognize what Counselor Lucy said. I had the privilege of going to the last game, and I think the important factor was, you know, the stats for that pitcher in the opposing team, she had 23 strikeouts in that nine innings, and she already got a full boat to Kentucky. But I think that she's a junior. But I think the biggest thing is after that game, how well behaved and how, you know, proud that team was. It wasn't, they weren't down in the dumps. There was some sadness, obviously, but they were very professional, and it was one of those games where it was, you were the edge of your chair the whole time. I mean, they went three extra innings in overtime, but, you know, it's better than watching a Red Sox game now, watching that team play. So it was great for me, and I just wanted to, you know, say the same thing Counselor Lucy said. It's, they might have came in second, but fantastic job, fantastic season for the coaches and the players, and well deserved. So, you know, not to be ashamed of with that second place. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Spetafora, from my seat. July 4th celebration will be Wednesday, July 4th, at Linden Park, commencing at 8:45, hoping to end by noon time, depending on when all the races end. I do want to recognize Peg Crowe and Kathy McMullin, Barbara Shabelli. I was asked or invited down to the Newland Street Y extension program last Friday night. Got the pleasure again of hanging out with the kids who hang out down there with a couple of fine young men, as well as some other good residents and folks who work for the city volunteering their time. We've met, the two that I'm speaking about is Dan Linkwiss and Omar Sharif. I'm going, hopefully I didn't brutalize his last name, but these are two young men out of Malden High School that are making their way onto Harvard and are making the commitment that they're going to come back to Malden and continue the good work they've done the last three years. So, you know, kudos to those families and those young men and women that are out there making a difference in the community. For Peg, for Counselor Crow, champion that those helmets are safe and for kids, and they should be wearing them on bikes. So it was a great night as their breakup for the end of the year session that they have been doing down there. So, thank you. Oh, and actually, I'm being, actually, one of those kids that I just referenced, Dan, I believe, also got accepted to Oxford. So fabulous, fabulous stuff coming out of Malden High School. And one last shout-out, Kathy Keen at the Mystic Valley Charter. If anyone drives up near Maria's Pizzeria and see the Fay Garden that Ward Eight takes care of, but actually through the help of a Ward Eight resident, but she actually utilizes her students from the Mystic Valley School, and it's beautiful. Just take a look at what, you know, public engagement, volunteerism, and kid activity can do. So thank you, Kathy Keen and her students.
Counselor Altrino's motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?[1788.58]